Alright. Hello. Now, this is our first Town Hall meeting and I am CM Veritas.
I am Yor.
And in, yeah.
We have Eden, um, voice chatting in with us?
Yes, she is, she's a mysterious voice in the void, talking to us. I mean, isn't Eden a god in Norse mythology?
I'm sure, I think we're all gods. I just don't know what.
But, uh, so here we are, uh, so this is our first Town Hall meeting, this one is going to have our has, I should say, Nor with us to answer all those dying questions that you have, uh, I guess those questions you've been dying to say. But, yes.
Um, for those of you who are unfamiliar with me, uh, I'm the producer for Ragnarok 2 and recently, since we took over development of the game, head creative person, I don't know, I mostly do the same thing, but now we're, we're developing here, so.
Yes, we now have complete control and by complete control, we're trying to figure out how to use that control. It's, it's a lot of stuff that I, I just sit back and watch the programmers and go, you can make it work, right?
And we can't. The way that, the analogy that I like to use is if somebody gave you a bicycle and told you to make a new one just off of looking at it, that's what we're doing.
That's right.
Uh, so we'll get the bicycle going, it's just gonna take a few steps to get all the pieces.
Yeah, I know what I want. And which we will talk about after.
I'm not saying there's gonna be bicycles in RO2, I hope I didn't promise that.
Awesome, kind of a bicycle and have a little horn and go whee, whee.
We can have bears that quack, so I'm sure we can have bicycles to make that noise.
That'll be awesome. So, on our forums, you guys got together and you put together an awesome list of questions to ask the lovely team of Ragnarok Online 2, so, uh, I guess we could start off. Eden?
Okay, well, let's start off with a very important question for Nyor from Dark Nefira. Nyor, squid and octopus or squawkedopus, what are you?
Um, so, I think that I'm a person, but, uh, so for anybody who's unfamiliar with the whole squid octopus thing, uh, Yor is a spelling of the Norse god of the sea, and so that's what, um, I started.
It was, forgot, it was up to the wrong time. Wrong question, there you go, right question.
So, um, uh, I guess I'd have to pick both, a squid and an octopus, um. I don't know, it'd be really hard to choose which one or the other.
Well, according to your little icon, you are half man and half octopus with.
And I believe Flannel or Flanel drew that for me, unless I'm completely mistaken.
Possibly, I have no idea, but it was adorable.
Yeah, it's awesome, it's a lot better than the one I was using before, I don't remember. Oh, oh, I think the one I was using before was an old guild leader made it for me, who no longer plays, so hopefully he doesn't watch the stream, but that one was also lovely. I'm probably gonna get a message about it, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, so let's go with squawkedopus then. Um, let's see, next we have another question for Nyor about what to expect from RO2 this year. Um, let's see, Tony Trua asks, in an ideal world, what are the major milestones on the roadmap for RO2's development in 2016?
For 2016, um, our big focus right now is, um, tackling bugs, balance issues, um, reducing the grind, fixing leveling, it's a lot of focus on the game as it is right now and responding to feedback that we've heard from the community, from our volunteers, from even internally for us that have played it. Um, some stuff that has been sitting around for years, we wanna get to. Um, we're obviously looking long-term and stuff, we still have Niflheim on the horizon in the future of RO2, uh, but as far as 2016 goes, expect starting next month and then rolling out through the tw- uh, rest of 2016, uh, fixes to stuff, balance changes, updates to things, um. As we're getting our legs going, we're realizing certain things can be tackled quicker than others and so we're trying to tackle the quicker things so that we can roll stuff out to you guys, um, because I know that there's a lot of stuff that people have been sitting on forever, uh, battle tactics, uh, a bunch of those, um, a bunch of those things sitting there.
I, I, I definitely want Niflheim. I'm waiting for Nifl- oh, Oda's coming back. Oda, hello, Oda.
There, so.
There might be a small problem with how we're coming through this stream.
Okay, well, uh, I think if I'm turning up the, the, the TV that we're using as a speaker here, uh, so, and facing, you know, this is like telepresence, this is the newest thing. You're, you're like a, a robot, I hope. So, we're gonna face your your face, I guess. Uh, so, uh, can you say something and we'll see how that sounds on the chat?
Okay, how about now? They did turn into a variety of commercial KTV now?
Uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll see if the microphone picks that up a little bit better.
Oh, is it not picking her up on Twitch?
Uh, for whatever reason, it's not feeding the Skype audio into OBS. Uh, so all we're hearing is just from the speakers, so, uh, I guess to adjust items volume.
So I don't, I, I think it's gonna be even louder and more magnificent. Maybe.
Possibly.
Okay, cool, we'll test it out and we'll see and then if we all just turn up the, I'll turn up the volume.
Okay, if you can hear me just scream in Twitch chat and I will try to fix it. I can't make myself any louder without shouting at you guys, so.
And I can hit buttons.
Okay.
Great, so we, we answered this one, right, yeah.
Okay, um, let's see, next up, we have a question from Tu Ryu. What's the thing that you're looking forward to most with these newfound powers of control? This could be a feature, a fix, prison, etc. I think this question, we probably all have an opinion on, but let's start with Nyor.
Uh, well, to be clear, we already have a prison, it's Prontera Prison and a lot of people in-game who have, uh, done some naughty things have visited there. Um, maybe fleshing that out later on would be cool. But, um, right now, we're, uh, the coolest part of this whole thing is that we're able to take the, um, the feedback, the player submitted ideas and everything that we've kind of been the middle person for, for the last three years and we're able to look at it, flesh it out, see if it has a spot on the schedule and make it into something that can, can go into game eventually, I think that's the coolest part, whenever we can get something that a player has made into the game is great. In the, in the past, we've been able to do that at a much smaller uh, degree, uh, just 'cause we're, we're, it was kind of working through us through gravity, but now that we're developing here, we're able to interface directly and, um, oh, there's the chat, oh, sorry, I got distracted.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just put up the chat so that we could actually see what people are writing in too. Uh, oops.
Uh, but the other, the other part of it is that we're gonna, we're working on being a lot more transparent about what our roadmap looks like here going forward. Uh, a big problem that we had for a long time was trying to show players what's coming up, um, what's coming up this year, what's coming up this next month. Uh, we're reorganizing everything right now so that we can deliver that for players, so players have something to look forward to aside from just when is Happy Hour week, when is the Paraziv EXP week and that kind of stuff.
It'll be awesome, yes.
So yeah, I guess that's, those are the two big ones for me.
Yeah, awesome.
Okay, and Veritas, how about you?
Fixing all the text and more dynamic questing. I was, uh, yeah, 'cause seriously, going through the gnoll quests, I still have no idea what they were asking me. Some of them are special, I screenshotted them and put them together as a group thinking maybe if I looked at them later on, they would reveal some, but then they still made no sense, so I seriously, seriously just wanna fix all the text.
I mean, on that same note too, we have people here, uh, because we've adopted new regions, uh, that speak different languages, um, that speak Thai and speak, um, I'm totally blanking on the other languages.
Chinese?
But, uh, yeah, uh, and they've been wanting forever to update the, uh, the text in the game and all that kind of stuff. Uh, so that too, we're gonna get going so that we can go through and kind of update some of the silly pieces of text that are in there. Uh, I think recently we were talking to the volunteer, the volunteers about the, um, item description of the po, 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 po pouring mouth.
Yes.
And how fantastic that description was.
It's an amazing description.
It's four pows before pouring, that's the way to remember it.
Yes.
But, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, um, let's see, I think that we're obviously all excited about being able to implement the community idea, community ideas that we couldn't really force the old team to develop. I think there are a lot of relatively simple quality of life changes that can be made and I'm looking forward to seeing those actually happen. Um, I'm excited that we might be able to revamp a few things that the community has been really passionate about. We've always gotten great feedback about stuff and it'll be nice to actually make that happen. Um, let's see, there are a couple of features that I'd really like to see implemented, um, including redoing some old features like Jibun so that they're more enjoyable and relevant. And since Veritas and I do a lot of our work with the community, I would hope to see some in-game features that make it easier to participate in our community events. So, yeah, this is a really exciting time for the game and I can't wait to see what we can do.
Woo! Alright, oh, it's my turn, haha. So, uh, so, okay, next up, we have a question from Minimut. Why is it now harder to get to higher, higher floors on the Phantom Pyramid?
Uh, interesting question because, um, we haven't adjusted the, the rates on the Phantom Pyramid as far as I know, it still remains the same. Um, it might be that because we put very enticing items in there recently that the frustration you have when you don't get there i- is, uh, very real. Um, we're actually looking at that, we're looking at the Phantom Pyramid rates, we're looking at all sorts of rates, um, to try and adjust them to we realize there's a lot of random chance in the game and there's different layers of it and sometimes it's it's better for the player if we reduce that. Um, so it's not off the board, RNG is evil, uh, somebody said that in chat, um. So, we're looking into it, but as far as existing Phantom Pyramid, it hasn't changed as far as I know, um, it might just be that the RNG gods are not in your favor, I don't know.
It is very possible, could happen.
So we are looking into it though.
Thank you.
I realize I'm looking into the microphone when I should be looking into the camera.
Yeah, the microphone is quite huge, so I don't know if you guys know, we have this giant kind of microphone with a, uh, filter over it, so it just looks massive. We either have this one or the one that looks like a triple, so.
I think it looks like Wilford Brimley. But yeah, it could be both, the Wilford Brimley triple.
Yes. Uh, so thank you. In a similar vein, multiple people have asked questions about RNG and the kaffir shop. Nor, do you have any plans to change the RNG aspects of the vendor items from Chaney? And can we expect the kaffir shop to continue to be the major source of many of the most necessary items in-game?
Um, Chaney and the kaffir shop, yes, um, so when diamonds were introduced, I thought that they were a good system to tie people who wanted to play the game with people that were able to participate in the kaffir shop. Uh, the way that it was implemented wasn't the best, um, there's a lot of no trade stuff, there's a lot of issues with that, um. Right now, there's that daily cap on, uh, scrolls that you can use. I think we can still fix it, we can still pull away from the no trade, we can pull away from the daily cap, we can fix diamonds, it can be that source of, um, connecting people who, who can play the game versus people that participate in the shop. Uh, on top of that, we are planning on looking at all of the kaffir shop, looking at the prices and actually matching it closer to what we see as the market value for certain items. And what we mean by that is that there's certain items that are being sold in the kaffir shop for a certain amount of kaffir points that are being sold at a much lesser value for Zeny in the market because they're valued less. Um, we don't want expensive items in the kaffir shop if they're not worth that to players. Um, so we're actually looking at all the prices in the shop right now and one of the first things, um, regarding the shop that we're gonna do is probably just adjust all the prices, uh, which will probably end up being, uh, reduction a lot of the prices, and for a lot of stuff that you would probably use multiple times, refinement, honing, that kind of stuff where you're gonna wanna use multiple infiniums and things like that. Um, those are the sorts of things that we're looking at for the kaffir shop and, and ultimately, hopefully, if we, if we fix the diamonds and, and how that works and, and we get the kaffir shop in a better place, it'll have an effect on the KP rate, which is what a lot of the players use to determine how certain things work. Um, we can't straight up manipulate the KP rate 'cause that, we don't run that, that's a player thing. Hopefully, we influence it enough that players are able to, um, reduce their prices and make it easier for, for players that just can't participate in the shop.
Cool. So continuing with the questions about in-game economy, Minimut asks, what plans we have to solve the inflation that the economy is experiencing?
Uh, so I kind of touched on it, uh, just a second ago.
Yes, right.
We are, yeah, we're, so we're gonna, uh, adjust the, the kaffir shop, we're gonna adjust the, the, how the diamonds work in-game and how items are received, uh, because there are a lot of, um, crossover with the items that are in the shop, there were with Chaney, there's a lot of possibility for future items to go inside there too. Um, so we're gonna make it more available, not necessarily easier, I guess, for players to use diamonds to acquire items. Um, also, we're looking at, uh, there's a lot of no trade items that are coming from Chaney that isn't ideal. For me, uh, as a player, if I acquire the items that I want from Chaney, say I wanna get a certain costume and I get that costume, but I still wanna go and do my daily diamond scrolls. If we made, uh, special costumes, uh, tradable, they could take that, they can spend their diamonds on it, they can put it in the auction house, they can make money off of somebody else that don't, that doesn't wanna spend the time for it, but has the Zenys pay for it. If they're no trade, then they run into an issue where like, okay, well then I'm not gonna really deal with that anymore. That's the kind of stuff that we're looking at, where we're like, the, the long-term game, giving something to somebody to help the market, to help it grow. The whole idea is to have more participants in the market, even if you're not buying stuff directly from the shop, um, to help reduce inflation, which has just been an issue for, forever that we've tried tricks with, but.
Well, it's an issue with a lot of MMOs, I think in general, you always get that inflation and depending on if something gets released or changed.
Right.
It happens. Alright, so, let's switch gears a bit and discuss some of the concerns that the community has about the balance and fairness. So, Nor, Retrin has a question for you about balance, they write, there has been a lot of discussion about the game balance and complaints of unfairness between classes in PvP. In the future, can we expect a gameplay style where it is possible for any class to one-shot someone from full life in a 1v1 combat between equally geared characters?
So I wrote a note here and, uh, and I said, if there was a big whiteboard set up for RO2 PvP fixes, there would be a line at the very top with stars around it and underlines everything that says no more one-shotting. Um, I think the thing with PvP that's a struggle, aside from the, the woes of woe, I said that. Is that, uh, there's been an issue with stat creep and stuff like that, uh, where if you're unfamiliar with stat creep, it's when new expansions come out, new levels come out and you start to gather more and more stats, either percentages or fixed values and it just bolsters your character to a point where other systems like PvP become imbalanced and in this case, lots of one-shotting, not necessarily of the same class, uh, so then you see, you definitely see some classes pick up better than others. Um, we're gonna look at solutions for that, um, reduction of, uh, stat squishes, um, one thing off the top of my head is PvP increase and, uh, or attack and defense needs to be overhauled, it's, it's causing a lot of issues because it's a percentage right now that it, it does not work the way that it should.
It's a crappy percentage.
Yeah, and, and so we're looking at a whole bunch of stuff for PvP, it's gonna be evolved in the class balance stuff, um, uh, and, uh, what else did I say? Um, yeah, so we're looking at ways to move away from one-shotting, we wanna make PvP more competitive, by more competitive, I mean, um, more enticing for people to do, not just PvP for people that have a strong guild or a strong group of people, like, somebody can jump in and they can get a reward for something. We haven't had PvP rewards updated really since level 50 and I would like to bring that back to encourage just the, the average person to go in, experience it, because PvP is fun. I PvP myself, uh, 'cause it's hard to make friends. But, um, yeah, we're looking at ways, we want to, um, sort of split PVE from PvP eventually, um, so that we can handle them separately. Uh, we've been looking into ways to do that for a couple of years now, now we're able to kind of apply that logic to tests and things like that to see what would make most sense in RO2. Uh, and ultimately, it could mean, uh, another PvP set of armor and equipment, uh, which we also haven't had since level 50, which would be really cool to have. So yeah, it is on there, it is very important to us, uh, it's, it, to me, it's in, uh, part of class balance, is PvP is, is, I think class balance feeds into PvP and they're both very important and as we know, PvP is a huge part of RO2.
Yeah. It'll be awesome, so, thank you. So, another question has been asked about PvP bugs and the use of che- of cheat engines, or cheat engine. Nor, Nor, No- Noel asks if there are plans to create mechanisms that will prevent the use of cheat engine. Additionally, what is Warp Portal's stance on the Prontera South Fortress orb bug?
So cheat engine, cheat engine is a menace and, um, we've actually so, we've actually been working on something to try and fix it internally. Um, we used to have Hack Shield back in the day, we don't have Hack Shield anymore 'cause Hack Shield went the way of the dinosaur. Um, but we are of the mind that we bring our fixes into our game, we make them here, where we run them, we're not beholden to another program that could go away. Um, we've been working on a fix for it, it's in development right now. Um, the thing about cheat engine is it actually affects some of our other games, so it's very important to, uh, Warp Portal, um, that we fix it. Right now, we're working on a way and the way that they're doing it seems pretty solid. Um, so we're, we're, we're in a, we're in a stage of testing it right now. If it works, it will be coming to RO2 soon. But, we won't tell you, I don't think we'll tell them when it comes because.
Yeah, we're not telling them when it comes, um, I actually just talked to the developers not too long ago and so far, it has now been running successfully.
Cool.
So, hopefully, it still needs to do RO2 testing.
It won't be in patch notes or anything.
Yeah.
Mostly because, then you catch everybody using cheat engine.
It's great.
Right after you, right after you set it up, so.
Yeah, so.
Moral of the story is, don't use cheat engine 'cause we'll get ya.
It'll, yes.
Uh, the second question was, what's our stance on the orb bug in South Fort? Um, we actually, I had a meeting with, uh, our GMs the other week about, uh, and that was one of the topics that got brought up, uh, and they're looking at it. Um, it's going to be, it, one of those critical bugs that we focus on resolving. And I'm gonna avoid them saying the word soon, 'cause I see them saying soon in chat. It's definitely a problem and when you have something like woe where there's so many people going in and out and it's so competitive, you need to focus on those fixes first, so it's gonna be one of the top of the list stuff in woe that we're gonna look at, um, to resolve, uh, if there's any method, proof, screenshots, video, anything anybody has, always feel free to make a ticket. The GMs meet with us, talk to us all the time and they're feeding that information to us and any additional examples, help us. Um, you know, if it, if you think it's already been reported, but you experiencing it yourself, if you take a video, send it into us. Might, we might see something there that, that otherwise we don't see, so. 2008, 2009, what? Sorry.
No, sorry.
No, I, I got distracted by chat too. Um, okay, so where are we?
I just wanna say, oh, I was just gonna say, for anyone asking questions, we are not ignoring you. Um, we just, we already have a list of questions that we're trying to get through before the end of the show. If we, uh, once we get to the end of that, then we can start taking regular questions.
Yes.
Alright, go.
So, before we move on to some questions about future development ends, let's take a minute to address some of the burning questions that have been directed to each of us. Alright, Nyor, Tony Trua asks, if you could pick any pizza topping as your favorite, list the reasons why it's pineapple.
So, I don't even know how this happened. A few years ago, I was doing streams and people were asking questions and one of them was about pizza toppings and I discussed how pineapple pizza, or pineapple on pizza is the worst and I don't like Hawaiian-style pizza. Um, let me get out there and just say, I don't mind pineapple, I like pineapple juice, pineapple slices are amazing. I don't like pineapple on a steamy pizza. It's, it's not good. Um, as far as one of our favorite pizza toppings go, um, I know a place locally that does this shredded pepperoni, shredded sausage and then you take the half, house salad dressing and you put it on top and it's delicious. It's only like a week's worth of calories though, so you wanna not have it all the time. Um, but if we're talking random toppings, I do like anchovies and I realize some people will think I'm kinda crazy that I don't like pineapple, but I like anchovies, but you're wrong.
Because you're fish.
Yeah, I get it, that makes sense.
You're part fish, that's the thing. Actually, I can't say anything, I, I actually am not a big fan of Hawaiian pizza, I do not like pineapple on my food, but I like, I like anchovies.
Yes.
So, I'm like.
It's delicious.
They are, like little salty bits of deliciousness.
Oh, we have some disagreement in the chat.
Oh, go away.
Eden, you like Hawaiian pizza?
I like Hawaiian pizza, I actually really like pepperoni and pineapple pizza. It's, uh, anyway, let's not talk about it.
So if anybody wants to apply for, uh, an open, uh, CM position, we're gonna.
Oh no, I would have liked pizza toppings. Alright, um, let's see, Veritas, Epell asks the question, can we have a regular watch how terrible Veritas is at playing RO2, thanks a lot.
So, if you all really, really wanna watch me fumble through RO2, I realize that every time I play, I have Tony and Eppely tell me I'm doing it wrong. Um, I can definitely schedule that, in fact, um, do we want to tell them about the boosts for next month?
Uh, oh, the one we just discussed?
Yes.
Sure.
So, next month, we are actually doing EXP boost, so I'm definitely gonna try and be on every week for a length of time to see how quickly I can try and, uh, boost my character.
It'll be part of the anniversary event where we're gonna go crazy with the EXP boost, encourage people to level their alts and all sorts of stuff, uh, as, as part of events that we can do for the anniversary, but also because we know that we're going to be tinkering with leveling, streamlining it, doing that stuff, so as we get there, have this crazy XP until we, until we unroll those, uh, or roll out those updates that make leveling easy overall.
Yes, and like generally, so I have my gnoll and I have my main character, so we'll gain one full level, yes. Yes, all that effort, I will gain one full level. And Dragonlock, yes, time to level all of your alts. Uh, I guess the, the thing is, we just need to schedule it in because I've been doing those about two hours long and, uh, we have a lot of streams going now, so I just have to fit in what would be better, I don't know, when do you guys all wanna watch me do this?
We could do a committee forum polls?
Uh, which one?
A forum poll, it's been so long since I was a CM.
Yeah, you can do forum polls, I've done Twitter polls, all the polls, just polls everywhere.
Awesome.
And then, uh, definitely, we wanna get your ideas on the current, yeah, EXP system so we can, as you said, fine-tune it.
Yeah, anything to do with the leveling, I know a lot of people have a lot of opinions about master levels, we do as well. I'm sure that we overlap with a lot of them, a lot of them, so, but feel free, make forum topics, message us, send us mail that's not questionably packaged, please.
Graphs, uh, we'd also like a full report on the XP.
If you could work through the weekend, that would be great.
Yeah. Can you get those DPS reports to us ASAP?
But yeah, if you have opinions, uh, make a forum topic and do something like it, we see all that stuff and making a forum topic gets other players involved, so. Cool.
Okay, well, I can't wait for that and I'm sure that everyone will love the experience boost, so that should be fun. Um, oh, let's see, Epell has a question for me and that question is, how long until we can have another clown event?
Can I, can I cut in real quick and just ask, is it Epell or is it Eppely? Oh God, is it Epell? 'Cause I have been mispronouncing it this entire time.
You know, I, I've asked her that a lot and I'm, I, I'm pretty sure she's tried to type it out to me and I keep forgetting.
Phonetically?
Phonetically, 'cause we've never had her, we should literally have her tap in with our Skype so we can go, alright, you need to pronounce this for us, so we know exactly.
Now that I'm looking at it, Epell makes more sense and I don't know why I said Eppely. Now that I'm looking at it, Epele makes more sense and I don't know why I said Epele.
I have no idea. I was just guessing and if I'm pronouncing it wrong, consider a payback for asking the clown question. So, okay, for those of you who aren't in on the, on the clown joke, I happen to be slightly terrified of clowns. Um, they soothe me out and they always have. So, a while back, I made the mistake of revealing my fear to Niort. And of course, when he saw that they were clowns being made for the Halloween event, he decided to torture me with them. So, fast forward a few months and we were trying to think of invasion monsters and the idea of making clowns into party crashers came up. So, now I get to summon party crashers, which are very creepy to me, but on the bright side, I get to watch everyone kill them. So, yes, there will be another clown event soon and I will hate it, but I will enjoy watching all of the clowns die.
So I should definitely do a entire show as a creepy clown.
I won't be anywhere near it.
You are? I think I'll watch it, but feel free, do it if you want to.
Let me sit next to each other, that's, I'll just have to like prop up.
This is the wall, it's the Great Wall of Norr.
Yeah.
Okay, and on that uh just terrifying mental image, let's get back to business. Um, so let's talk a little bit more about future plans. Okay, Niort, Senko Tora asks, what are your future plans for RO2? And how will you direct, how will you direct the game to compete with other three D MMORPGs?
Uh, so this year, uh, like I mentioned before, it'll be a big focus on fixing and updating the existing game. Uh, while we're working on the next big update, uh Niflheim. Um, there's a lot of feedback ideas and conversations we've had over the years with players and volunteers. Um. So, we're also paying attentions to conversations held on the forum and the social media sites, like I said before. Um, on the second question, uh regarding competing with other three D MMORPGs. Um. That's a, I'm not sure what answer you want from that, but um, we pay attention to other uh games that are coming out that. Um, we play other games that come out. Um, the reason that we're in the business is because we've played other games. Uh, we're playing other games, we're getting ideas. It's a good way of figuring out what works, what doesn't work, what's good design versus bad design. Uh, before we start doing stuff in RO2. Um, when it comes to competing three D MMOs. Uh, I mean, you try and make the best product that you have with the games that you're, you have uh going on and and stay aware of what else is coming out or is on the horizon. Um. I wouldn't say that we would directly respond to something that's coming out, um. But I I guess I don't know exactly how to, how to answer the question because I'm not sure what, what they're asking, but yeah.
I think in many ways, uh, you hit the nail on the head with the whole, taking what others have done and doing what you can to improve RO2 and.
Yeah, and it's not necessarily that we are taking their ideas and using them, but we're seeing what they do for certain things and realizing that. Oh, they treat PvP like this. Maybe if we make tweaks here, we realize that this is, this will be more fun or this will be better balanced or or things like that. Um, it's always good to be aware of what, so you're not operating in a vacuum.
Yeah.
Cool, yep.
Okay, um, let's see, we have a couple of questions about adapting some RO1 zones and features into RO2. So, Boozen asks, has the RO2 team thought about adding the Glass Time to RO2? And for those of you who didn't play RO1, Glass Time is the crumbling former capital of Rune guards. It's home to a large number of evil demonic and undead monsters and it was a popular leveling area for crusaders, priests and other characters that use holy elemental magic. So the zone is near the city of Geffen, which RO2 has not yet added. Um, returning to Boozen's question, Niort, can we expect the addition of Glass Time or any other RO1 cities and maps to RO2?
Uh, so I like the idea of joining RO2 with RO1 and uh build upon the legacy that RO1 uh has set up. Um, but of course, we wanna focus on on the current game and and resolving what's in there. And then we know that next is going to be Niflheim. Um. We're in a phase right now where we're kinda picking up where the old team left off, so that's sort of why we're taking that path. Um. It doesn't mean that nothing is off the table, uh, but I would not expect last time in twenty sixteen. Um, but like I said, I like bringing in uh something that's a callback to RO1. Uh, there's a lot of players that play RO2 that used to play RO1, um, and and having stuff that kinda calls back to that old game and gives you. A shinier three D version that isn't over ten years old. I hope the RO1 guys are listening. Uh, would be cool. Uh, so it's not off the table and I love theory crafting that kinda stuff with players. Um. I don't know if Glass Time would be the next one to do it. I know for a long time people have been wanting other zones.
I totally want Glass Time. I want Niflheim, I want Glass Time, I want the tower. I'm just like, I think it would be awesome to have all those things. So as soon as we fix everything, if we can figure out how to do that. If I have to paint them and build them myself, I will throw them in there just because they're awesome.
There's actually other stuff that we've done in the past. Some of it hasn't actually made it to the game where we were doing callbacks to certain zones in RO1. I know that we wrote some quests that were calling back to certain uh country zones like uh Brazilis and.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Didn't exactly make it into the game, but they're sitting in the set, uh somewhere, um, so.
So we must find them.
Fleshed on.
Yes.
But yeah, I mean like new zones and stuff, obviously that kinda stuff, that takes a long time, so. Um, we have Niflheim, it's gonna be our next big one and right now it's it's focused on, let's. Let, I mean, I've been hearing this from players that are coming back too and existing players are like, okay, cool, let's fix, let's address these bugs, let's, let's balance this, let's fix PvP. And that's what we're gonna do. I mean, it's, it's quicker to do that too, but um, yeah. If you have ideas for RO1, you have stuff you liked about RO1. Go to our CMs, go to our V mods, go to our VCRs, post it on the forum, like, we've actually gathered these ideas and and they're really cool.
Yeah, I believe there's a forum post too where uh was specifically about RO1 item or RO1, RO2 crossovers and uh. Yeah, feel free to add to that. A lot of great ideas on that one.
I don't know about Hodes though. I don't know if we can bring Hodes in.
I'm pretty sure no games could use Hodes anymore. Okay, since we're talking about RO1 crossover, we have a question from iCloud about our plans for the class system. They write, is there a chance that we will have a third class after master, master level and new skills as well? Okay, so in RO1, once you reach the base level of ninety-nine as a second class. So, for example, in leveling alter to Soulmaker, Soulmaker as, or Soulmaker or master level Soulmaker would be the second class equivalent in RO2. So, once that class hits a certain level, the character can choose to transcend and start the leveling process all over again. You would start again as a level one third class character with access to a new class name, new skills and new equipment. So essentially by rebirthing the character, it has a potential to grow into a new stronger version of the original. So, Niort, is there a chance that we might take a similar approach with the next extension of skills? Or do you have a different goal for third classes and new skills in RO2?
Um, it's an idea that we've actually played with in the past, um, uh, because it's it's part of the old game. Um, right now, we're trying to fix the levels, the leveling, the skills and all that kinda stuff. Like I said before, uh, kinda on repeat. But we're also looking at ways to encourage um ranking up, um, still using the master level system instead of scrapping it. Um, adding possibly new skills that will only be unlocked if you rank up to a new rank. Um, stuff to avoid rank squatting. I mean, I understand rank squatting because sometimes you just want extra MP and stuff like that, but um. We're looking at adding those sorts of things. It's not to say that third classes aren't off the table, but it would be. Down the line a bit, probably. I don't know. I I would, it would be hard to say. It's it's, it would have to be discussed and how we can do it and how we can apply it to the classes that we have. Uh, I think it's a very cool idea. Um, it would be a serious undertaking. Um, but for now, we're we're just focused on on fixing what we have and adding to it.
I know recently we've had a lot of requests for a gunslinger class.
They do have a really awesome costume in our game.
I, I know, I'm just like, dang it, it'd be awesome. One day, one day we can have all these awesome things.
We're all just going to have to start saying soon, soon, or not soon, in the case of some games.
Yes, yes, soon, uh.
Alright, so returning to the topic of RO2 changes, Trivia Bot is of course the most loved bot in public chat. When can we expect a trivia title?
Um, so. We wanna come out with new titles and and new items and all that kinda stuff. We are in the process right now. It's about a month out since we took it over, so we're still getting up and going on a certain things. Um. We're going to start working on that kinda stuff. Probably this next month and um I'd expect summertime that will start determining what kinda titles, what kinda stuff we wanna do. And because we already know of the trivia title and and might tinker with it with some bit, with a bit. Um. I would say this summer, um, in the next couple of months. Uh, once we get it up and going, I don't think trivia titles should be that hard to do. Uh, so trivia title will be good. And it's also good to appease Trivia Bot every once in a while so it doesn't take over.
I'm pretty sure it is slowly. We just don't know it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, in the meantime, I'll practice my typing skills because some of you people are insanely fast. Trivia Bot might be making bots to answer its own questions because you guys are lightning fast with the answers.
I'm pretty sure I still have the record on points though.
I'm pretty sure you were cheating.
Uh. There's no proof to that.
Totally honest, honest, honestly one, yes.
Okay, so PG Love asks a question about Munal. They write, the Munal coupon exchange NPC, those spinning glasses. Any plans to update shop to a different costume item?
Are you gonna answer this one or?
Oh, that was me, sorry. So different costumes for sure and possibly even new uses for chance coupons in general. Some of the shop items need to be updated to reflect current market values, so we have a lot more work to do, uh. Work on in addition to changing the shop content. Contents, yes.
Yeah, so to build off of that, yes, um, the reason why Phantom Pyramid finally got a cycle is because. We could do that. And so it'll just be a matter of figuring out what items we wanna cycle for the Munal uh vendor and um and getting that going. Um, yeah, there's a lot of stuff on there that's really old. So, uh, I think we're trying to get tested. Um, that we can make new stuff, we can implement new stuff and it doesn't catch on fire. Um, and then that'll, that'll start rolling out probably this next month, uh, and then through the summer and stuff like that, so, yeah, um.
Seaport park not catching on fire.
Those sorts, those sorts of questions are actually really good because there's a lot of different pieces to RO2. Um. A lot of them have been updated and something like a vendor that that like that where we can cycle items, uh, really good to point out. Good question.
Okay, so on the topic of cards, Mia GS asks, why are the yellow cards bound and do you plan to introduce other cards? The Iown and Hands etc. Alright, so the yellow cards, or the cards with yellow borders are epic cards, yellow or golden borders. Um, there are some that are bind on pickup and some that are bind on equip. So, the cards that drop from boss monsters such as Serenya or Osiris are bound on equip and can be traded. The bind on pickup cards that I think they're referring to are those that came from the anniversary card random boxes or the unconfirmed epic card items. So those were basically packs of cards that didn't belong to any in-game monster. I think the intention of those cards were supposed to be as a personal reward, so you could use them or you could use them for fusion. But they weren't necessarily intended to enter the market as tradable cards. So, there are bind on pickup versions that could be released in the future and the Hands and Iown cards will surely be used for something. Um, I think it would be interesting to make new Kara titles from those cards since they do represent some of the most famous RO2 characters. So we can work on implementing them in a way that makes them valuable to everyone, even if you don't want to equip the card.
So we could call it like a super ultra legendary card master title.
It's very legendary card master. Okay, um, let's see, PG Love also asks if we plan to hold either a past title or a new title event in the near future?
So, uh, the yearly holiday events will make a comeback and we plan to keep creating new title events as well. Ideally, these events will link to more car achievements and we'll have a more intricate title system for these special events. It should make it so that if you participate in all the yearly holiday events, for example, you'll get useful titles in addition to the cosmetic titles. Yay.
Okay, um, Niort, anything to add to that?
Yeah, uh, I think, I think she covered most of it. Um, the the prior events are probably gonna roll out with uh additional new titles, um. Yeah, I think she covered it.
Cool.
Um, let's see, speaking of events, Edgar asks, I have heard there are seasonal or holiday events that have not made it in game yet. Which of these are your favorite and will we see them in the future? So let's start with Niort.
Did the MVP Edgar ask us this?
Um, I think the user Edgar asked.
Okay.
But MVP Edgar might have.
Uh, so I have a note here that says Eden told, uh, is asking me not to mention the Thor bunny. Uh, I think I've told that story before to people.
This is very Thor stuff.
Yes, uh, for anyone who's experienced the Spring Festival with the the giant bunny, um, it used to be. A Thor character in an entirely different event, uh, that got changed piece by piece until it became the Spring Festival. Um, but uh there are several event proposals um that never made it to game, a lot actually. Some um that volunteers sent in, players sent in, but others that we've done ourselves. Um.
Oh, oh, sorry.
So I got a note. Um. Uh, oh, so there was, uh, there's a Valentine, a bigger Valentine's Day event that we've had in the past. We had a St. Patrick's Day event where we kinda. Did a callback to the one that uh RO1 does. Uh, there's a Midsummer Festival, there's Union Updates. Uh, there was an MVP system for RO2 borrowing from RO1. Um. A lot of them, I mean, there's several that are almost three years old or some that are recent. Um, as far as my favorite goes, uh, I like the St. Patrick's Day one just because it called back to. Certain uh NPCs that were in RO1 creatively. Um. I also really like the MVP event that we had written. Um. It was ju, I think it was just as Advent of Valkyrie was coming out, so uh actually one of the MVPs that was in that was Edgar. And then we eventually got Edgar with Forgotten Payon. Uh. So, there's a whole bunch. Um. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if I have a favorite.
Uh, I have no idea what hasn't, what hasn't been released yet. I mean, I I personally am just, but I'm biased. I like the Dragger. You know, va, undead Nordic vampire things coming back to life, so I I have to go with that one. Like that, uh.
I like Norse stuff, yeah.
So I was like, I did a lot of research for that. I love that thing. I was like, yes, I just need to make it run a little smoother. That's all I, I realized after playing, I'm like. Need some tweaks, but I'm gonna stick with that.
Alright, hopefully we can see more Norse vampires in the future. Um, let's see, so as far as events that never made it in. So, I wrote a proposal, I think it was last year, for St. Patrick's Day as a holiday event. In the event, the gang of Leprechauns was basically hunting for what they described as a sort of lucky rabbit's foot item. So, it turns out that the lucky item was actually another leprechaun, but it was a leprechaun with very lucky arms. So, yeah, basically I wrote this entire event off of a pun that I had in my head about the whole like lucky charm cereal leprechaun. And he always says they're after his lucky arm, or lucky charms, sorry. Well, in our event, the leprechaun yells, they're always after me lucky arms. And, yeah, that might be a reason why it was never put in game, so I'm sorry. And if it ever actually does get in game, I am, I'm still sorry.
I can a hundred percent say it wa, it wasn't the pun that made it into game considering that they put in the booty thief pirate title.
I like that title. I think it's funny. You know, twelve year old B is just giggling in the corner, right? Alright, so, we have time for a few more questions. Uh, let's start with the question asked by multiple people. What changes our plan for leveling, leveling, master levels and character experience in general?
Um. So.
Alright, so.
I think that was the last, yeah.
Yeah, that was the last of our main questions, so I'm gonna take this down. You can all, now you're all gonna be on, uh. We're all live, yay.
Uh, so leveling, uh. Uh so leveling, uh we're actually, we've heard from a lot of people that they really like the Legend of the Second, one through fifty as a basis. Or at least in comparison to master levels, that's gonna be a good basis for us to go by for what people like. What we're expecting to do is we're going to look at uh mastery points required per level, probably decrease it. Uh mastery points dropped by monsters, um EXP dropped um for quests, daily quests. Items for those daily quests, uh adjusting monster difficulty or aggressiveness, especially when you think of like Forgotten Payon where. Everything wants to eat you. Uh adding in new quests, adding in new ways to level, we're going to, the the whole idea is we want the community to move with the content. And what, when people get stuck at certain levels because they feel. It's too grind intensive or for whatever reason, they kind of drop off and your friends level up, but you stay there, we want to streamline it now that we're. Are we ninety levels in? Getting everybody there, so we're gonna be looking at all those things, you can expect those changes to start rolling out next month. Some of the stuff will take a little longer to put in, like additional quests and stuff, but adjusting um EXP required per level. EXP drop by monsters, all kind of stuff, uh it'll just be about finding what we call the Goldilocks Zone, which is. I guess not too hot, not too cold, that doesn't really work here, just right, it's the just right zone, if you know about the like, the Goldilocks story, so.
Okay, and okay, and on a similar topic, Epley asks, when are FP and Juai's mobs going to be stripped of their lethal attack powers?
I think that goes into uh what we were talking about uh with Forgotten Payon, and how everything there is aggressive, it's really hard to get around. I put in a whole bunch of quests initially for Forgotten Payon, and I think people do maybe. A quarter of them because they never want to get to the other side of the island, because it's just too difficult. That's that's gonna be looked at as far as uh what we can do with uh the smaller minion monsters, maybe making them neutral versus aggressive. Uh adjusting difficulty, uh we want to bring back the ability for people to solo level. But still provide that engagement uh with the boss encounters. Also looking at adding additional drops or possibly token vendors, um an example we can use is uh Forgotten Payon with the Edga tokens. We could add more stuff there, make farming tokens there, something to do beyond just the armor and then the weapons that you can get. So yeah. Epley, sorry, I'm so sorry for mispronouncing your name.
On the topic of Juai, many people have asked if we will see a change in drop rates in the future, particularly for cards and DNA.
Uh yes, one of the first things we're working on, and uh you will see something soon in May.
Another topic important to many people are cosmetic changes. What are your plans for in-game cosmetic changes such as hairstyles and color, skin tones, and even gender changes?
Uh just a whole bunch of different types of beards.
All the beards.
Uh yeah, we've been wanting to do um ways to customize your characters since we launched. Different ideas, but also just being able to re-customize your character would be good, um it's something that we're, the question has always been. Just mechanically, how do we get that going? So that's something that we want to look into, how we can streamline that for players, so they can do it, um it's not impossible, it's just gonna take a lot of. Trial and error and testing and stuff like that, um it's something that we're gonna be looking into, because like I said, it's something that we as players have wanted since. Since we came out with the game, and having new ways to customize your character beyond costumes, making yourself look cooler is fun.
Yeah, and um it seems the the popular opinion is that. The community would, the community would like to see some of these options earned in-game. So for example, new hair colors or cosmetic vouchers earned in-game through the Kara system, chance coupons or as quest rewards. So it'll be nice to be able to change your look when you want, and having these items available as in-game rewards in addition to Catfish Shoffer Chiny would be nice. So we'll see how that goes.
Alright, so uh I guess I just want to, we're most, that's the last of our questions, our our. Our forum questions. Uh at this point, we can actually look at maybe some of these, because we have, we have five minutes, so we have to add to them really quick quickly. So Jerickmace forty-two asks, will that include reducing the ridiculous overreliance on AOE to do the anything?
Uh I think he's referencing leveling, yes, uh so the idea is we want to pull away from. Really intensive, grindy, group-oriented leveling, leveling should be approachable to people if it's just them and they can log in. So, yes, um that'll definitely include that, it'll be probably, the changes will make it so you don't have to do that.
Epley asks, hey Nora, can we get more DNA in the DNA boxes?
Does Epley need more DNA?
I don't think so, I think she just has tons of DNA, as is boxes and boxes.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if you if you think that we need more DNA.
Q eighteen, can we have all the dance animations available to everyone regardless of class?
That one might actually be a good starting point for customization options, because I know that. I think that's possible, it'll just be a manner of packaging that and getting that going for people. So uh yeah, that can that could definitely be one of the customization things that actually wouldn't require, I mean, you cut out a lot of the the. Uh prep work for that, um just determining how to package it into an item and. Allow people to to use the different dances.
And then um some people are uh commenting on a bug, I can take the question, Miss Lady Forest, it's a bug? I guess. It's all, it's all broken up, um if you do see a bug, guys, feel free to tell us, report it, and we'll uh. We'll investigate that, give as much detail as possible, um in fact, there's a really cool uh blog of uh.
There's a blob on the website uh under the bug reports forum, you can kind of see everything that has been reported or or is in a different stage of being reported. But if if you want to report something, I would say make a support ticket, include, include, if you include video and screenshots, that's great. Uh but the GMs can help you out, and the GMs also um report these bug issues and they test them out themselves. So they're able to see if it's, if like, if it's just a problem that you might be having, or it could be a global issue that we'll need to fix. Make a support ticket.
And I I forgot this, this is very important, apparently. Arbalist RO two asks, grizzly form cosmetic costumes, when?
Do people play Beastmaster? I'm not sure.
Very important, Arbalist RO two. Yeah, I I don't know, it's probably not.
I think he's looking for costumes for the the bear form.
Yes.
We would have to figure out what what that would be. I'm very afraid of what Arby would say.
This, well, apparently Edun also says beer bear, beer, bear beards.
Breaking his heart.
Bear beards.
Nyar, if I can give you to answer, just uh briefly, it looks like there were quite a few questions about what exactly. The Warp Portal takeover of RO two entailed. If you could just give people like a general idea of what that means, it looks like there were a lot of questions about it. And what exactly happened, so if you want to, as much as you're.
Sure.
You're up to sharing.
So for anybody unfamiliar how we um. Did RO two before, Warp Portal was a publisher for RO two, so it was actually being developed at Gravity's headquarters. And we were publishing it, which entails. You know, everything that we do, customer support, marketing, all that kind of stuff. We actually now develop other MMOs that started developing somewhere else, uh like Requiem, like Rose, all that kind of stuff. And we were presented with an opportunity to take over the RO two one, because they wanted to move on to other stuff, and so um. They came to us. Probably six, eight months ago and asked us about it, and it wasn't until. About a month or two ago that we knew that it was actually going to happen, uh and then in March is when we started taking over. And um. Got all their tools, how-tos, all that kind of stuff and how they do it, and so um for the last month, we've been getting our. Developers, we already have here, because like I said, we've developed the other other games, um up to speed on how RO two works. Uh it's it it's it's really cool, because RO two is very similar to the stuff that we've done in the past, it's just different, and it's actually really big. Which kind of makes sense to a lot of, it should make sense. So yeah, so now we are developing it here at Warp Portal, um instead of just publishing it, if that answers it.
Yeah, I think so, anyone needs any clarif- clarification? But uh we are now at six oh one, um did we want to go ahead and giveaways?
So yeah, so for people who are still here and stuck with us all the way to the end, thank you, and as a thank you. I'm going to give you a very specific set of instructions to receive a reward. Okay, so I'm going to clear chat. One time and one time only, type your in-game name and you will be magically sent a three-day VIP. So do that now, type it just once, if you type more than once, I will ignore you and you'll never get a VIP from me ever again. But yes, you can, you can feel free to start typing your in-game name now, one per person viewing, please.
What if they use two of their character names? Did I just plant an idea?
Don't give them ideas.
Okay, look, everybody's behaving, it's perfect, great, you guys will get your VIPs either this week or next week. I think, I think that's good for questions and everything, and I'll let you guys close it out.
Oh, Arbalist. Uh but uh yeah, so this was our first town hall meeting, we are hoping to have these at the last Thursday of every month. You'll get to see. You know, the lovely nor.
Hello.
But uh yeah, and then for the rest of the the month, the same time, same place, every Thursday, we have our weekly RO two. Um but I'm Cem Veritas.
I'm Nyar.
And in the.
And I am the voice of Eden.
Yes. Awesome, so uh thank you very much, we hope to see you all again, have fun.